We're on now.
We're on?
You're on now.
It's a gift.
Did I see it? I watched it like nine times.
What?
The video of the mayor that forgot to take his, turned his mic off.
Oh geez.
Went to the bathroom.
Some of us are live, some are not. Do you have a mic?
Which may have also been made.
Lo de di, lo de do.
Is this a new name tag? Is this a new? Is this a new name tag?
Uh huh, I've got another one. There was one right here and I put it in my thing. It looks just, that look, just like the other one?
It does, that's why I wondered if I had it.
I really do not like the Gmail setup and boom. It is so awful. The Gmail, like you can't find anything. Like I, I force it on my. Alright.
Just in case, and you know that I've got it everywhere in the house.
Me too.
Where are the people? You guys ready?
Actually, my eyes have gotten worse, I'm gonna have to go back and get that pair of T D D more pair of, you know, the dollar store and get more like twenties. Instead of one seventy-five getting under.
When you get the higher description.
Yep. I can see far away, lot really good, but up close it's getting worse and worse.
You're ready for me or? Cause my nose is running.
You see that YouTube video where they're all sitting at a bus station? And this lady goes, achoo! This guy goes, pow! And everyone's like, sss. And they all go back to work.
Someone just, someone just, yeah. You know, he said we're about two weeks away from knowing everyone's true hair color.
Yeah.
I like that. Premium. We can probably sell these.
How many times are we all gonna spray this stuff? Yeah, scoot on down away from me.
Sorry. I was telling her. Well, I'll tell you later. Did that. Is that my message, Joe? Yeah, exactly. I hope we're not live.
Well, hey man, you're a, you're a daily.
No, I think these are on, but the video. Oh, good. Correct? Have these been on the last five minutes? And like?
Recording.
Oh, so I'd, great. Oh, good evening, Canton. Good to see ya. Gosh. In worlds?
I'd like to call our March nineteenth council meeting to order. Uh, I want to thank all of our citizens who are watching us via the live stream. May notice it's a different sort of council meeting. May notice the dice is set up a little bit different. We are practicing our best social distancing standards, six feet apart. Our staff is, uh, the three that are here are down, um, down below here. And, uh, we, um, we are not, uh, here, uh, to oppose what we've been preaching online on our social media channels of urging everyone to stay home and not gathering. Um, we have a le- legal obligation to meet. And, uh, it's also our job that you elected us to do. And it's never been more important than in times like these. So, um, I want to thank our council for showing up and their leadership during this time. I want to thank our city manager and our city staff for their great efforts in the past couple of weeks. Every day's a new day around here and they've gone above and beyond the call of duty to keep the city running and to adjust on the fly as we go here. We are in, definitely in uncharted waters here, but, uh, we are, are doing well. So, um, just want to reassure the public that the ci- the city is, is running well and, uh, conducting our business and doing everything we can to flatten the curve. And we certainly, uh, encourage our citizens to do the same. Wash your hands often, clean, uh, your surfaces, sanitize your surfaces, those especially that are touched often. And, uh, practice social distancing and, um, uh, don't gather in groups and stay at home if you can. So, we know it's, uh, boring and tedious, um, but we'll get it through it together. So, we look forward to the time we can all welcome back to City Hall and we can have great meetings and, uh, assume our original positions here. So, uh, with that, we'll get on, uh, the agenda is gonna be as brief as possible tonight, uh, and to get our council members back home, uh, where they can, uh, self-quarantine. But, uh, we're gonna get through this, uh, as quickly as possible. So, I'd like to entertain, uh, a motion to consideration approve agenda. I do have, uh, a few amendments I need to add to the agenda. I would like to add, um, as a first item on the agenda, uh, a, a discussion, possible action to authorize the mayor to sign an emergency ordinance during the state of a health emergency. And then I would like to move, uh, the old business, uh, item A, the only item in old business, um, I would actually like to move that to the consent agenda as, um, approval to follow staff recommended, recommendations on housing needs assessment and market study proposals. We, we discussed those, um, at our last meeting and if you guys are okay with that in a matter of time, um, I would like to add that consent agenda so we can get that one less item off the, uh, normal agenda. So, um, are there other amendments or changes to the agenda anyone would like to make?
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion approved. A second by Mr. Estes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? All members voted for the motion. So, we, uh, added, um, an item, uh, to the agenda, which is an emergency ordinance to grant authority to mayor and/or the city manager to establish policies and to establish meeting procedures during state of public health emergency. As most of you guys know, the, um, Mayor Kemp, uh, proclaimed a state of health emergency, uh, in the state of Georgia and, uh, to respond to the COVID nineteen, um, crisis. And, uh, we are preparing here in the city, uh, and, uh, Mr. Peppers is gonna, gonna go through this. Uh, what this does is allow myself or Mr. Peppers to, to be able to authorize things or make, uh, procedural decisions, uh, in case council can't meet, uh, or, or things that will keep the city moving forward. Uh, it's he or I in case, uh, one of us, uh, becomes sick or something happens to us, God forbid, which, but, uh, basically, Mr. Peppers, it's basically just a procedural change, uh, ordinance. So, Mr. Peppers, you wanna? Or Mr. Dyer? Which one? Sorry, I'm used to having you guys up here, so I, and I can't see that far, so.
The, the ordinance achieves two things. One is going forward, but it's also some, uh, affirmation of things that have already been done by authorizing those policies to be approved by the mayor of the city manager as regards employees and, and access to facilities. So, some of those things have already been done. So, this would put your blessing on those and allow for, uh, any other things that may happen in the future. The meeting procedures, uh, when I drafted it was basically to do this, like you're doing now. I know there's some, been some discussion about just canceling meetings. This ordinance would not prohibit you from canceling a meeting. You can cancel a meeting. It, and what it just establishes for the, if you did have a meeting, it would allow teleconferencing, which is allowed by state law, but it would also allow us to keep the public out if the public health emergency still exists. So, under our charter, uh, emergency orders or ordinances can last for ninety days. Um, so you would, if, if the emergency ended before, then you would need to repeal that in the future. And if it extended beyond that, you'd need to reenact it. So, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
And you guys have a copy of this, uh, ordinance at your, at your seat. Um, what I would suggest is if you are inclined to, uh, make a motion and prove this, that we, uh, would do that and then have a discussion about April, public meetings in April. Let's do it as two separate, uh, discussions and votes. So, uh, any discussion on this ordinance? Everyone understand what it is, why we need it?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved and a second by Ms. Wilson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion. And one of the things that this ordinance allows us to do and one of the reasons that we're meeting here in, in, in public, in person tonight, uh, when we're urging everyone else to stay home and not meet, um, again, we're legally obliged, obligated to do so. And, uh, one of the things that this ordinance would allow us to do is to reconsider public meetings. And, uh, it's been discussed and for a number of reasons, primarily to protect, uh, our elected officials, but more importantly, our citizens and our staff. Uh, I would like to propose or entertain a discussion that we counsel all public meetings for the city for the month of April. Uh, if city, uh, council needs to meet, uh, we can do so by teleconference, uh, special called meetings by teleconference, uh, and, uh, again, with this, what the emergency ordinance we just passed would allow, if things come up, um, that need to be taken care of, myself or the city manager could do. Of course, we would notify you guys of any of those things that, that happened. But, uh, canceling all public meetings for the month of April, which a lot of cities are, are doing, to, to really, again, flatten the curve, uh, would, would not only mean city council meetings, but, um, you know, public hearings and, and planning and zoning, uh, board of appeals, all of our city meetings, uh, boards and commissions, so, and council meetings, so.
Would that include Main Street meetings?
Yes. All city and public meetings. Mr. Dyer?
One thing that, if you could add to that, I don't, I, Mr. Peppers and I didn't even have a chance to talk about this cause I thought about it walking over here. It, it, if you mentioned appeals board, some of those things have time constraints and so we would need to, uh, toll any time limits. If there is anything out there that has a, a time limit, if we're, if we're gonna cancel public hearings, we need to make that okay to do it later without anybody missing.
Without any penalty or anything. Yeah, makes sense. And thank you for thinking of that. Again, things are changing on a, on a minute by minute basis and we are responding as quickly as we can to all of this. As effectively as we can, so. So, appreciate you bringing that to our attention, so. Discussion of questions?
One question, Bill, as it relates to, uh, tools, online tools. So, uh, maybe this is a question from Mr. Peppers. Uh, do we, does the city have an agreement with a Zoom type tool that all of these committees, if they wanna meet, can meet virtually?
So, right now, we can do that through, uh, through our, uh, Google platform. Uh, we can set a meeting date and have everything run through a Google, uh, telephone service. That's something that we started earlier this week, uh, and so it's available, uh, and can be done that way. What we have traditionally done is if it's an outside vendor or business that's asking for a teleconference, we've asked them to set it up on their platforms. But with a board or an organization of ours, we could set it up, uh, through Google. Perfect.
And this also just allows to have a, just a standard, uh, you know, phone conference, so, as well, so.
So, would this, um, how would the public be informed of meetings and decisions? Would it just be minutes posted after, if there were to be?
So, we would still have to meet the requirements as it relates to open, open meetings from the standpoint that we have to publish an agenda ahead of time. Unless it's a special called meeting. So, if this council decided that you wanted to move forward with work, instance, we would still try to operate out of our routine matter of four. There's really nothing on our agenda that we could not scoot out until May. But if something emergency in nature came out, uh, we would get an agenda out twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. That's, that's best practice. And so it would be posted on our website. It has to be posted on this facility, even though we're not technically bound to meet at this facility, we would post it there. We'd reach out to media partners and post it on social media as well.
And we would, and we would post minutes as well, so.
It might be helpful just to, um, catch you up on kind of what the law is and, cause you see cities doing all kinds of different things and, and I think city attorneys all have different opinions about what is allowed and not allowed. The open meetings law contemplates emergencies and allowing you to participate by teleconference. That's the word that's used. So, that's a twenty-five-year-old term. Um, I mean, and, and so with the technologies we have today, live streaming, uh, the, the org, the statute requires that the public be able to participate in a teleconference meeting. And it's really contemplating there being a meeting and you calling in. That's what the statute has in mind. So, when I drafted the emergency order with the streaming, my thinking was, uh, that if the public could view the meeting as it was happening, we were meeting the spirit of the open meetings law, even though they weren't here. And that ultimately, I think that would be okay in an emergency situation. So, if we did a teleconference meeting where you're setting up a conference call, technically, you'd have to have the public have that phone number and be able to call in. What I would hope that we could do is mute the public. I mean, if there's some way to set it up where the public's not just chiming in in the middle of a meeting, uh, but they could at least hear what's going on, that would meet the requirements of the statute. Well, and, and, Mr. Peppers had a, right, we could actually, even if it's just a staff person here, we'd have the meeting here and everybody's calling in. And have it livestreamed, so.
Constituents could text. They could ta- they could text their questions.
Well, I, you know, we don't, we don't allow questions in a meeting anyway. So, we wouldn't necessarily wanna do that, but if, if you did wanna, and, and I would hope you'd only be doing this and with a very small number of agenda items, that we wouldn't be running a long meeting, so you wouldn't allow public comment.
Okay.
So, but Mr. Peppers did make a good point about you could set it up here as if the meeting's here and even if it was just one of you here and everybody else calling in, we could livestream and as long as we can hear your voices, we would, that would satisfy me. I, I don't think there'd be any worries about the open meetings law then.
And I would suggest if, if, if that is necessary, uh, we would only do it for a special called meeting, a reason to do that, um, I think otherwise it's just kind of creates too much confusion. But if that happens, uh, I, I'm happy to come here and have you guys call in. I'm happy to do that, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, uh, with that emergency order, there, you're sort of given a blanket approval in advance of actions, so there probably won't be a whole lot of things that the city council would have to do. But as the mayor said, it's changing by the minute and we, we can't think of everything. So, you might have to. And if you, uh, limited it to COVID nineteen issues, uh, then I think it, it helps. People will understand more. Uh, you know, I'm thinking in terms of violations of the open meetings and trying to avoid those. I think there will be great forgiveness for things and under these circumstances.
Right.
Um, and in that regard, I mean, one of the things that you're allowed to do is rely on my advice as a good faith action. And so, um, you know, I, I'm happy to give that opinion on the, the ordinance and the way it's set up there and teleconferencing in. So, I think you would be safe on any of those.
Yes, the ordinance we just passed is based on the President's Declaration of a National Emergency and then the, uh, Governor Kemp's, uh, state, uh, uh, health state of emergency in, in Georgia. So, um, that's, everything is based on that. So, these, these actions we're taking tonight is all because of that, not because of, we don't want to, to, uh, honor the open meetings, uh, intentions or, or any of that, so.
I mean, it's, I'd be happy to answer the question. I've sort of taken a deep dive into emergency powers, uh, for cities, which, and there's very little and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have that you think the public might be interested in cause we're hearing cities doing all kinds of different things around the country and what, what you have the power to do and don't do, but.
Some city charters allow for, um, teleconferencing and, and canceling meetings, if I'm correct in that.
Uh, nobody's charter should allow teleconferencing in, under normal circumstances.
Okay, right.
That's a state law. Allowing it in emergency circumstances.
There was a conference call with, with Governor Kemp on Tuesday. Uh, it was scheduled for Monday. He had to cancel it and for Tuesday. And GMA had actually requested that he pass an ordinance, um, basically waiving the open meeting laws during this crisis, uh, and, uh, he, he ba- his response is basically that he legally couldn't do that, uh, but for each city to cut, to defer to their city attorney. But, uh, now I think, again, different cities are doing different things that, uh, you know, you won't, they're, they're doing what they need to do in, in their cities, um, but we are trying to, to follow the law as, as we know it, so.
We have, we've always taken it very seriously and I, and I'd hate to just completely abandon the open meetings laws.
Yeah.
Uh, when there's technology available to.
Exactly.
To help us at least have the public. Um, I mean, we, we are limi- very limited in what we can do. So, if, if anybody's thinking that the mayor's gonna close down restaurants or bars, uh, you, you don't have the authority to do that. That would have to come from the governor.
I have been having that discussion with several people, so.
Only the governor has the power to do anything like that. We would be able to set curfews. There, there's pretty clear authority for that. And, and there would be other things you can do, but in terms of the public and, and.
Right.
We do have some.
There could be national orders or state orders. And, I mean, that is out of our control, so.
We, we are allowed to adopt some emergency, uh, actions that are not inconsistent with the states. So.
Mr. Mayor, what, could you remind us when our first April meeting is? What is the date?
Second.
April second? And is that spring break?
No.
It's the week before spring break? Are we allowed to cancel that meeting and wait and see for the next April meeting?
Yeah, but if we, if we pass or we vote towards a motion to cancel all public meetings for April, there will be no meetings, so. And what I was suggesting is that we would not even have a teleconference council meeting only if there's a need to have a special called council meeting via teleconference or some other technology solution, so.
So, I'll get in touch with Jeff Lewis to tell him that we will not have the transportation.
Yes.
Town hall, we'll reschedule it.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yes. I'd take a motion if, entertain a motion if council.
Motion to cancel all meetings for April, all public meetings.
And to waive any deadlines?
Okay, a motion to cancel all public meetings for the month of April and waive any deadlines related to public meetings. Let's check on that.
Another motion and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion, so. Okay. We do have a public hearing that was scheduled for tonight. Um, we discussed as our last meeting, so, uh, I, I think we can do this quickly. But Billy, do you wanna, uh, quickly review this and we can officially do this?
Sure, so you have before you a text amendment to the Unified Development Code that would amend the table of uses for manufacturer and add the def- um, of, uh, manufacturer alcoholic beverages. Add to that definition.
So, this was the, a text amendment and this was kind of the mistake that was left out of the, the text before, right, down at the mill?
That is correct.
Okay.
And it was recommended for approval by the, no, this one did not go to the planning commission. This one came directly to council.
Right.
Who recommended approval?
Uh, staff recommends approval.
Okay. So, uh, just to be official at this time, I'll open, um, public comment. Anyone here would like to speak in favor or did we get any emails or texts or calls?
We did not receive any correspondence from the public about this to your case.
So, anyone speak in opposition? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And any discussion on council? If not, I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve, the text amended?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the text amendment. Uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is approved by all members. Next, a consider, uh, consideration approved of the minutes from the March fifth meeting you have in your packets. Any changes or revisions to that?
Move to approve.
Motion approve?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted to approve, so. Next informational items you have in your, uh, agenda, the, um, Chief Mayor Field's, uh, UDR, uh, report and that's just for information only, so you can review that at your, at your leisure. Do we have any other announcements that anyone wants to make tonight? Ten-minute public input, we don't have anyone here tonight. I don't know if anyone sent any information, but again, we, we, we appreciate everyone who has followed us on the live stream, so. Next, we'll move into our consent agenda. So, I will read these items and if anyone wants any of these pulled off to discuss separately, we'll be happy to do so. Item A, approval of proposed year-end budget amendment. Assistant manager, Mr. Ingram, we discussed this at our last meeting. B, approval of proposed resolution to reimburse city of construction costs on the wastewater treatment plant. Item C, approval of Unified Development Code amendment. Definition of indoor games or recreation facilities. And then we added, uh, item D, which was the former old business item A, uh, is the, um, approval to, um, for the housing needs and assessment market study proposal, um, to follow the recommendations of staff. Any, anyone want to pull any of those off consent agenda or any discussion? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion, second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion. So, there's no new business, uh, Mr. Peppers?
Good evening. I sent to everyone a memo earlier today on some of the things we're doing, uh, at the city. Some of the things we're doing at the city as it relates to, uh, this current pandemic. Uh, as you all know, they don't offer courses at Georgia Municipal Association on how to deal with pandemics. And so, as I explain to our staff all the time, every day is a little bit different. We get new questions, we get more information, we make tweaks to our operations. Uh, and we do that understanding that the public health of our citizens, our customers and our employees are our utmost priority. Uh, so, some of the things I wanted to, to mention to you tonight and for those that are listening at home, I won't, but in short, you know, your staff is daily participating in conference calls, webinars and research as it relates to their particular area and what's going on, uh, nationally and, and globally in this pandemic. Uh, we participated in conference calls this week with the White House, with the governor's office, with Center for Disease Control. We've, uh, listened in to an expert on disease epidemiology from Emory. Uh, we're participating in calls with, uh, local business groups and other statewide programs and of course, our own vendors who are reaching out to us to let us know what they're doing with their particular businesses and, and, and what we need to be aware of. We decided, uh, over the weekend, last weekend, to, uh, limit public access to our city facilities. to our city facilities. Uh, that was done as a way to cut down on the individuals that come through the buildings to keep our employees safe, and also cut down on gathering of individuals. Uh, we have stressed to the public that they can make all of their payments online. We do have a Dropbox here at City Hall. Uh, we've been, uh, working with individuals through emails and texts and phone calls, uh, and pushing as many people as possible to our website and to our online applications. Uh, that seems to be going pretty well, and the public in general appreciates, uh, where we're moving from that, uh, point of view. Uh, one thing that we've done with our employees is we're requiring all employees that work in group settings of more than one person to take five-minute fresh air breaks, get up out of their seats and move around. Uh, as you can imagine, the amount of questions and concerns that the city receives from the public, it can be mentally draining for a lot of our customer service workers and, and employees in general. And so an opportunity to stand up every once in a while and just take that fresh air break and get away from your desk. Uh, I, I will tell you, this used to be a school building, and some of us have used the hallways for a little bit of running exercise this week, uh, just to get a few extra steps in. In the utility billing section, which probably impacts, um, our customers the most, as I've said, we're not taking, uh, payments, uh, in office, and so because of that, we're utilizing the Dropbox online payments. Uh, customers can make payments by phone through our third-party, um, vendor. Um, we are not doing any disconnects, um, on utility services, at least through the end of April. Uh, we put that process in place because, one, people need to wash their hands, and it's hard for them to do that if they don't have water. Uh, additionally, uh, if you don't have running water in a, in a home, that's one of the reasons, uh, that we can conduct property, and we want people to stay at home. And so we're not doing any utility disconnects, uh, through the end of April. We're also not, uh, we're also waiving all penalties and late fees during that same timeframe. Um, so far, uh, it's been well-accepted. Uh, as you can imagine, people are, people are utilizing the drop-off box. Um, we discourage people from putting cash in the drop-off box, um, but it does happen occasionally, and in those instances, we're mailing receipts. We have multiple employees that check the Dropbox just so we can maintain, uh, internal accounting controls and things like that. Um, in the finance department, we're working, of course, to make sure everything's cross-trained, so that if somebody has to be out, we've got the opportunity to, uh, keep our, our accounting circles working properly. Uh, in waiter, uh, water and wastewater, a lot of research is being done. Uh, at this time, CDC and World Health Organization finds that as long as municipal water supplies are treated with chlorine and, and other chemicals that we use on a routine basis to purify our water, that COVID virus, uh, is unable to live in that environment. So that should be, uh, something that the public will appreciate hearing. Um, we are working with our partner and our wastewater and, and water treatment facilities to make sure they have the redundancy necessary to operate in case they have an illness. Uh, and so, uh, right now, we're, we're lucky that we work with an external provider there, and they have other resources in other communities that they can provide necessary. Um, our police department, those are our individuals who are out there in the public every day, and so some, some of them are a higher-risk category. Um, and so what we are working on is limiting, limiting the opportunity for them to have, uh, interaction with the public as much as possible. So for instance, if a complaint gets called into 911, uh, it's not a life, uh, a life or death situation. We're taking the information over the phone, and then we're calling to take a report as opposed to physically going on-site if we can do so. Uh, additionally, we're making sure our officers have all of the, uh, personal protective equipment or PPEs necessary, uh, in their vehicles. We've, we've been in training videos on that to make sure they're accurately using those, uh, pieces of equipment. Um, we have limited access between a shift coming in and a shift going out, being in the same facility at the same time. Um, our officers are very lucky, the city's very lucky. Our take-home vehicle program basically provides the mobile office for all of our officers, and in many cases, they don't need to get into a facility, and so they can operate from an isolation standpoint, uh, to begin with, and so that's been very good for us. Uh, of course, you know, there are things that go on where, uh, multiple officers need to respond to a call at the same time, and so we're working through that. Uh, we're also working with our partners at the Sheriff's Department, other law enforcement agencies, and, and fire and EMS, just to keep each other up to date on what's going on in the, uh, at Public Works Department. Um, we are continuing to work at all of our facilities to sanitize as much as possible. Uh, CDC actually recommends if you're, if you're needing some, some alone time, a walk in the park is a good thing, as long as you're social distancing, and we know that we have citizens that are utilizing parks for that very reason. So keeping the restroom well-stocked, cleaning those high-touch surfaces like rails and playgrounds. It's not because we want to give a false sense of security to people that these things are clean. We just want to cut down on the spread of germs in general, and so we're paying a lot of attention to those particular areas. Uh, we do have our, uh, roll-off site still open at 2525 Ridge Road. Uh, little change in operations there. We're not helping to unload any, any particular, uh, vehicles. That's something that the individual needs to do for the protection of our staff. Um, municipal court, we've reset court dates, uh, so that, uh, court's been moved to May. That's giving us more time for people to get well before they come to court, and so notices have gone out to individuals here. Uh, one thing that the city is, has done, uh, in conjunction with several other cities, is to limit the population that are inmates in our local jail. Um, so you may have an individual that's in jail for a probation violation or of a sentence. Everybody that goes through municipal court in Canton is in there on a misdemeanor charge, and so from our standpoint, you know, if we can get people out, we're getting them out, uh, and having them come back to court at a later date, uh, so we can continue on with their probation or sentencing. Uh, in the building department, we do about 30,000 inspections a year, so there's a lot of, of our employees out in the public. Uh, so we instituted a change there, um, on residential inspections, which are a lot of our inspections. Uh, we've notified the individuals calling in the inspections that we're happy to go out and do those inspections, but they can't be in the facility with us, so that our employee's the only person in there at the time. Uh, and of course, they are provided with the materials they need to sanitize their hands and keep clean on the site. Uh, we're also sending out our COs electronically and doing as much as we can for the building department. Same thing in community development department. Uh, sometimes it's hard to turn in plans in the Dropbox, and so in those instances, we are picking, and we're trying to get things turned around as much as possible, but we do have some online options for things. Business licenses are due at the end of this month, and so we're providing some flexibility for those businesses that don't have those in at this point, uh, and some waivers. There are certain things that are required, like, uh, uh, notarized signatures. Well, it may be hard to find a notary in some cases, and so we're working with individual businesses there. We've also been sending out correspondence with our business community to let them know about changes with small business assistance loans from the SBA that, uh, came out this morning, and also find out from them if there's anything else we can do to assist them during this time. Uh, we've, we've basically canceled all events through April. Um, we were participating on a conference call earlier today, the Main Street program was, and, uh, recommendation for the state is really to look at canceling all events through June 1st. Um, so we haven't gotten to that point yet, uh, but by canceling events through April, that gives us an opportunity to really think about other things that need to be, uh, in place when we do have gatherings of the public again. All of our events at the Canton Theater have self, are voluntarily canceled, and so, uh, from that standpoint, uh, you know, it's pretty much closed down. Technology groups working to get us as much equipment as we can have, so that if we all have to work from home and have the access to do that, uh, it's not as simple as with certain businesses for the city to completely shut down a facility and work from home. So we're, we're not moving in that direction right now, but we're trying to come up with contingency plans so that we can, and have redundancy. Uh, Human Resources is working daily to look at changes that are coming out from EOC, FMLA, changes based on federal laws and guidelines that we're getting from CDC and other groups. Uh, in conclusion, you know, every day's a little bit different around here, and so, you know, our, our most important, uh, asset at the city is our staff, uh, and so we're doing everything that we can to protect them and make sure that they feel comfortable, but at the same time, understanding that when they leave the office, they have things that they have to deal with at home as well, and so it's a different time for all of us. Um, I did want to let you know that one of the things, um, I am proposing is that next week, we're going to move to a minimal staffing, uh, model here at City Hall. Uh, with those employees that are, that can telework, we're going to allow them to telework. For those groups that telework's a little bit harder in, we're going to thin out the number of employees that we have in those departments on a daily basis, so that we have fresh employees that we can bring in and alternate in, uh, while also providing, um, operations citywide. We also have a number of employee groups that can do their work completely in the field without coming in the building from the technology that they have, and so we're going to allow them to do that. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I know that's a lot of information. Yes, ma'am.
I know this, this is unprecedented. We're all sort of going by the seat of our pants, but I want to just commend the staff, particularly Billy and you, Mayor, for keeping us informed during this time and for the professional way everything has been handled. I'm very proud that the city of Canton is on the forefront of what's going on, and that we are practicing modeling what we want our other citizens to do. I just want to express my appreciation. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Grubbs?
Mr. Peppers, is there anything that you need specifically from city council? Does staff, the police department, need our help with anything? Absolutely anything?
You know, the most important thing is, you know, you, you have your own groups of individuals that you work with on social media, and you have your own contacts. And the most important thing we can do at this time is just to remind people, you know, it's, it's a great time for us to hit the pause button, and it's a great time for people to, you know, go home, relax if they can, um, check on their neighbors, you know, uh, there's a lot of individuals that this is going to hit financially, and so it's important for us to remember that whatever we can do locally, we should do that. Um, it's also important for us to remember that if we can stay out of our first responders' ways so that they can get their work done, and they don't have to worry about the person speeding down the road, uh, so that they can answer the more important call, that's the most important thing. Um, and also talking with children about what's going on. Earlier this week, we had a wonderful opportunity with a virtual touch of truck with the police department. I think people enjoyed that. We're going to try to do some more things. In fact, we were, you know, one of the things we're going to roll out, uh, next week, we were able to get our scanned copies of the city's coloring book. We're going to be sending out coloring pages and word searches, because ultimately, people need a little sunshine in their day. Um, we need it here at City Hall, too. We appreciate the public being so, uh, forgiving during this time. We hope that we have that same, um, compassion for them in everything that we do. Seems like everybody on the phone has a little bit different tone these days, which is nice. Uh, hopefully, they'll do the same on social media soon. But in general, it's just an understanding that every day's a little different, and so we're going to do the best we can to provide the best service that we can. Um, some things may move a little bit slower than normal, uh, but, you know, we'll, we'll do what we can, and if anybody ever has a concern or complaint or a frustration, they can reach out to me directly. I'm happy to take the phone call or the email or the, the text or the Facebook message or the Instagram message or whatever it is, and we'll see if we can get to them. So I appreciate that question. It's very thoughtful.
You have other questions? Thank you. And I, I want to reiterate, uh, just the appreciation for Mr. Peppers and his thoughtful leadership during this time, and, and our entire team here at City Hall have been over here quite, quite a lot frequently the past, uh, two weeks, and, uh, I'm just so impressed with their resourcefulness and the, the, the speed with which they take action and, uh, never even without thinking about, uh, anything else, but, uh, they, they, their first priority is to take care of our citizens, and, uh, I just really appreciate that. Uh, I want to thank our police, uh, department. Uh, again, I've been checking with them a couple of times over the past couple of weeks, and they're just happy to, um, to, to service the public, and I know that they're going to become even more important the days ahead. Their main, uh, their main, um, mainly upset right now that they, they can't, uh, do their community events and coffee with the cops, but they look forward to picking those back up. I do want to thank our local healthcare workers and Northside Hospital and, and, uh, everyone that's working hard on the front line. These people are going to become more critical in the days ahead. Um, first responders and, uh, our grocery store employees and our local restaurants, uh, who've just really been innovating on a daily basis and trying to do anything they can to save their businesses, but also to, to feed our citizens, uh, in, in new ways. Uh, I want to thank the nonprofits, uh, who've kind of come together to serve and take care of our citizens, uh, in new and different ways. Um, and just our citizens who are reaching out and taking care of their neighbors and coming up with ideas, um, and being creative and, and how we get through this together. Um, it, had someone reach out to me just before this meeting and with an idea of, of us having a virtual community toast tomorrow night on a Friday night of, uh, I think it was called Social Distancing Friday, so just to celebrate the community and, and the ways that people are coming together, uh, in this time of crisis, you know. Had this, uh, had this hashtag called the coolest small town in America, and, uh, I've always believed it, but I've never believed it anymore so than I have the past couple of weeks, so. I want to thank everyone. I want to thank people who've sent their prayers and their support and understanding the past couple of weeks. That's been easy, but it's been reassuring, and, uh, I promise to keep trying to get information out there to you. Uh, Mr. Peppers and his team is posting on our social media site. Uh, we are doing our best to get information out to you when we have it. As Mr. Peppers mentioned, we've been on conference calls with the White House and Governor Kemp and, um, CDC and, and others, and, uh, it, it literally is changing, uh, on an hourly basis and sometimes even more often, and so, um, citizens may not always enjoy the information that we share, but I promise to keep sharing it as we have it, the factual information that we're getting from the front lines, and so we'll keep sharing it and, um, letting people know what's going on, and, uh, we will get through this together, but I'm, I'm proud we have this team working together, and, uh, I'm confident we'll get through it and, um, come out better on the other side, so. Uh, that's all my report I have tonight. Anything else? Not entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion of a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted to adjourn. Thank you. Thank you for watching, Canton. Wash your hands.